I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission to order on March 6th, and welcome all of you. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and the United Republic, or witness stands. On my behalf, in the name of the Lord, in the name of the Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Wow. Pink.
I thought we were going to go first. I said at least we'll be hidden in the front.
Here.
Commissioner Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Coats. Commissioner Sibley. Commissioner Perrault.
Here.
I note that a quorum is present. We're going to wait for the approval of the minutes because Peter has just run to get them. He forgot to bring them tonight. So, we will, just to give you an idea of what we're going to be doing tonight, I know you, many of you have picked up an agenda. We do have one brief item of business that we need to take care of, and that's under Old Business. It's the approval or disapproval of a repeal of the entire bylaws and rules of procedure for the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Silver City. Now, that might seem a little odd to all of you that we're going to abolish all of our rules, but in fact, once the Land Use Code was approved last year, it contains all of those laws and procedures and rules under which we operate, and that has been enacted. So, we have those in place, and our previous bylaws and rules of procedure are superfluous. In fact, if we ever had any kind of illegal case, they might muddy the waters by having two sets. So, we're going to do a little housekeeping. And if I could have the motion, please?
I move that we approve the repeal of the entire bylaws and rules of procedure of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Silver City.
I'll second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay. Just to note that we are doing this on the recommendation of the town attorney. All those in favor of repealing the entire bylaws and rules of procedure of the Planning and Zoning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay. I guess we actually should have approved the agenda. I'm getting ahead of myself. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as we have changed in round already?
I'll move that we approve the agenda with the noted change of delaying the approval of minutes until they arrive.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The agenda is approved. Now, let's move to the new business of the evening, which is our community forum. And this is a discussion of traffic safety and congestion in the Alabama Street neighborhood. And Commissioner Lundby, if you would please explain what our purpose is here tonight and how we're going to approach this issue.
Nice turnout.
Very much.
This is a good thing. We have so many people here tonight. Many of you may be aware that a vast majority of the activities that the Planning and Zoning Commission participate in have to do with typical activities involving either the us making a final decision on or making a recommendation to the town council on cases that had come before us. And these cases could include conditional use permits, dimensional adjustments, variances, amendments to the Land Use Code, either the text of the code or the map, zoning changes, annexations, plan unit developments. And this involves a great deal of the work we do as the Planning and Zoning Commission. On each agenda, there's an item on community input. And that's an opportunity for people who attend those meetings to bring forward any subject matter they'd like to present, talk about, offer an opinion on. Historically, the majority of our business has been in the form of things that I talk about. However, in the last year under the leadership of our Chair, Alice Jones, we've tried to bring some more focus to other aspects of the powers and duties outlined in the Land Use Code, of which there are 10, including the proverbial other duties as assigned. There's a lot of verbiage in here about what those duties and responsibilities include, but the things I previously mentioned are important to the town, and they're especially important to the people who come forward with the cases, because we're making decisions about property frequently. And so, it's important to the individuals. It can also be very important to the town because it can set precedent. The other things than our duties and powers, I would more characterize as, and the things we've chosen to bring some visibility to, I would more characterize in the arena of sensing, doing studies, creating dialogue between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the community on subjects of interest. Things that are important to you as a community, and things that are important to us in helping the community grow and be a better community. So, we've had the opportunity in the last year to have some community forums and bring some visibility to some subject matters that are different than the traditional variances and zoning changes and things like that. Just two examples being the redevelopment plans associated with Penny Park. We had all the plans in here, all the different alternatives, and we had some dialogue about that and talked about it. Last year, very close to this time of year, remember, we had all the fires. And that was fresh on everyone's mind. We had a community forum and invited the Town of Silver City Fire Department, I believe the police department was here possibly, U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service. We had representatives here to talk about fire safety, to talk about and present information to the community about creating defensible space around our homes. We felt that was important to the community at that particular point in time. I know it had an impact on me. I spent the next several months hauling two tons of gravel and taking two tons of brush to the dump to create defensible space around my house. So, when things come to our attention, we have made an effort to bring this forward to the community. Recently, we've had two cases come before us involving properties along Alabama Street. One was a variance for the construction of a wall. The other one was a conditional use permit for the construction of a church. We decided it was appropriate to create a community forum, to open the dialogue among the community, us included. In the course of dealing with those two specific instances of the variance and the conditional use permit, there were a lot of comments that came forward. Incidentally, both were approved. There were a lot of comments, though, that came forward in both cases on certain subject matters, which prompted us to be here tonight with you. Those subject matters included the mitigation of noise levels from traffic along Alabama Street. This was associated with the proximity of residences to the traffic lanes, setbacks of properties, elevational differences between the road grade and the grade of properties, surface water drainage, pedestrian and bicycle traffic in close proximity to vehicular traffic, the safety of children on residential properties, off-street parking, increase in traffic due to increased development on Cottage Sand Road, safety issues associated with site distances, speeds, and turning lanes at the intersection of Alabama Street and Highway 180. And then, the cooperation needed among certain entities, specifically the Town of Silver City, Grant County, and the New Mexico Department of Transportation. So, these were recurring subjects for which people had thoughts, shared ideas, and we thought it was appropriate to come together tonight and listen, to have our community with us so that we can hear what you have to say, hear your thoughts, record this. We're here tonight more to identify the problem rather than create solutions. There's no sense rushing off to solutions to something that we have not been able to clearly identify. It's our long-term hope that through efforts such as this, that we can take forward to the town council, that they will then raise Alabama Street situation to a higher priority for their consideration of what to do. So, we're here tonight to listen, not to provide answers to problems. We need to identify the problem first, and we can only do that with your help. So, that's why we're here tonight. And the next step is to bring a little bit more information forward so that everybody's working kind of on the same starting point. And to do that, Jim Coats, I believe, is going to spend some time with more detailed information than the general kind of things I've been sharing with you. So, does the commissioners have anything they want to add before we turn it over to Jim?
No, thank you very much, George.
Take it away, Jim.
Thank you, George. I hope people can see this. If not, Jamie, would you mind moving the map for George? I've been asked by the commission to provide some of the background information based on traffic analyses and comments that we've heard about the traffic situation in the Alabama Street neighborhood and along Alabama Corridor. I appreciate everybody being here tonight. This is really a great turnout, especially on a day when you've probably already done your civic duty by going down and voting. Just to get everybody on the same page, I wanted to go through the definitions of what we're using anyway, to define like the Alabama Street Corridor. And that would include Alabama Street North from USA 180 to the Town Limits. The Town Limits is the red line on the map over there and up here. And we want to make sure that we understand the difference between that and Cottage Sand Road, which Alabama Street turns into at the Town Limits. And also, we want to make clear that the US 180 is the southern boundary of the area, and it's actually owned by the state. The state is responsible, and the county is responsible for Cottage Sand Road. The only part of the Alabama Street Corridor that the town is responsible for is that between the Town Limits and US 180. And then, for the sake of discussion, we wanted to identify what we're thinking of as the neighborhood. It's, what we're looking at is the US 180 on the south, Mississippi Street on the west, Mississippi Street being the street that goes under 180 over to the university, and Town Limits on the north, and Silva Creek on the east. So, that is the boundary of what we're thinking is the Alabama Street neighborhood. Now, George alluded to a conditional use permit that we, or that the commission granted to a church, and I wanted to explain some of the aspects of that. It's going to create some change in the neighborhood. We can look at it as a cautionary tale because of the changes. We always have some fears or concerns about changes in the neighborhood, though this change might not be as fearful as some people might have thought to begin with. St. Francis Newman Center Parish plans to build here behind the Montessori School and St. Mary's. They have a five-acre parcel that it has a little extension out to Alabama Street. They have purchased that, and they have plans to build a new sanctuary and a fellowship hall behind Montessori School. It's not necessarily as dangerous as it might sound to some. Based on the traffic survey that was done when they first proposed building behind Montessori School, we found out that their project, once it's built out to have the fellowship hall and the sanctuary, would create a traffic, the number of vehicles per day would be about 75 per day utilizing their church facilities on the weekdays. The peak time that they would be using that area, or the peak time of traffic for the church, would be between 4:00 and 5:30 p.m., and depending on the day, that would be about a 9% to 16% increase in the traffic on Alabama Street. Saturdays and Sundays, there'd be about a 250 to 300 vehicles per day, which would be a 10% to 12% increase in total vehicles those days. Presently, or at least in 2010, the entrance to Montessori at Alabama Street, there's approximately 17 vehicles coming out of Montessori or going into Montessori at between 4:00 and 5:30. So, there's already some traffic utilizing the area here where Montessori and the church would be using an easement into that back area. Right now, or at the time those studies were done, there were 339 vehicles along the corridor between Alabama Street intersection with 180 and the Montessori entrance, of 339. So, we're talking the increase of 9% to 16% for the weekdays. Newman Center, though, had the plan, and they were asked to do this by the commission, of extending Mississippi Street, which stops at Hill Street right now. They would extend Mississippi Street into their property, and they would encourage their congregants to use that entrance rather than using the entrance off of Alabama Street. They've come up with some suggestions of always having it in their bulletin to encourage people to use that entrance rather than the Alabama Street entrance. The traffic analysis that was done in 2010 for the project encouraged that and said that it would mitigate probably 80% of any of the traffic, as long as it was being actively encouraged. There's been a number of traffic analyses done on the Alabama Street area. Most of them have been done through either the auspices of the city or the county, or through the developers of potential projects. The first one that we have a good record of is done in 1996. And then, there was a traffic impact analysis done for the Branding Iron Properties, which is, if you can see the map, let's see, that would be this area here. And that was in 2005. In 2010, the Newman Center did an analysis. And then, recently, in 2011, the county did a road count at the Branding Iron entrance for the Cottage Sands Road. And so, that was done last year, and that's the information that we have to go on in looking at the numbers of vehicles, how often, what the peak times are. There's some limits to any traffic analysis. It's not an exact science. After going through all those packages of data and counts, I realize that it's definitely not something that you could bet on as far as how accurate they're going to be from one day to the next, because they rely on traffic counts that might occur two years apart, five years apart, 10 years apart, and usually over just a day or two, and might be different seasons. So, you're never getting anything other than a snapshot at a particular time. Focus has also generally been done on the US 180 and Alabama Street intersection rather than on Alabama Street or Cottage Sands. The first information I could find on actually the Cottage Sand count was based out of the 2011 traffic count by the county. Traffic conditions continually changed, and some of that has to do with some of the controls that have been put in place, speed limits, stop signs, speed tables. Comparisons that we'll discuss in a moment are extrapolated from one count to another, and I might be comparing 2010 data to 2011 data because that's the most current that we could do. So, it's not exact, but it's giving us more of a trend than it is an exact moment in time. And there have been no longitudinal analyses of traffic conditions of the intersection at 180, or the neighborhood, or the corridor. So, it's, they're snapshots. They're not something that you could take to the bank, but they're as close as we can get.
What is a longitudinal analysis?
I would say, what I'm talking about is over time, same time, every year, same time every week, over a long period of time. Excuse me. Some of the information that we were able to glean out of the analysis of the US 180 and Alabama Street intersection and the Alabama Street Corridor are the total vehicles per day at the intersection of 180 and Alabama Street has increased 5% from 1996 to 2010, though from 2005 to 2010, there was a decrease. This was interesting, and it gave us an idea of how inexact some of this is. It might be people moving off of Cottage Sands or out of the neighborhood, or just changes in the demographics, changes in the timing. It's hard to tell. We anticipated seeing steady growth along that area, but that's not what the data showed. About 48% of the traffic passing through US 180 and Alabama Street intersection, that's the major highway turning onto Alabama Street, enters or leaves the intersection from or to the Alabama Street Corridor. In other words, almost one out of every two cars that are on 180 going east or west are entering or leaving the corridor of Alabama Street. In 2010, or no, excuse me, about 73% of the traffic about Alabama, along Alabama Street corridor comes from or continues to Cottage Sands. So, about three out of every 10 cars that enters Cottage Sand, or enters Alabama Street actually stays in the neighborhood. The rest of it goes out towards Cottage Sands, north onto the county road. And that was based on, in 2010, there were 2,910 vehicles per day used the Alabama Street Corridor, and in 2011, 2129 vehicles per day used Cottage Sand Road. So, extrapolating those two numbers, the best way we could look at it is about 73% of the traffic of the street starts or ends up Cottage Sands, away from the Town Limits. Some of the issues that were brought to bear when the analysis was done for the church is there's a need for a striped right turn. Well, I'm just going to go forward. There's a need for a striped right turn on the US 180 shoulder for westbound US 180 onto Alabama Street. The need exists and will increase with additional traffic, no matter where the traffic comes from. The state has said nothing can be done with the right turn lane unless the shoulder is preserved for bicycle use, or unless some other accommodation is made for bicycle use, which now occurs between the line, the red dotted line, and the edge of the highway. So, they were adamant about that when we talked with them about the possibility of putting in a right turn lane there. One of the issues that came up when the church was first presenting their development plans was that there would probably need to be a left turn lane off of Alabama into their property, which would be, create a problem because there's not really room right there on the street to make that left-hand turn lane. That's why, when they started looking at it, they thought if we could encourage most people to use the Mississippi Street extension that they plan on building, it would alleviate some of that problem and maybe not require a left-hand turn lane off of that, a dedicated left-hand turn lane. Another problem that was really brought into focus when we started looking at this is the issue of site distance from a vehicle leaving Alabama Street needing to pull out onto 180 at that intersection. Because of the way the road is curved and the intersection is configured, the site distance is rather limited for the speed at which the oncoming traffic is moving up 180. This red line represents the line of sight from car at the stop bar where they're supposed to stop at the stop sign. You can see that this person is pulled out ahead of the stop sign so that they can see. And I'm sure that any of you who have gone through that intersection know that if you stop back here, you're not going to see anything that's coming. You have to pull out front. This is the line of sight. The yellow rectangle represents about the point that you can first see a vehicle coming up 180 on its westbound path. Another issue that was brought up in the traffic analysis was the intersection site distance at Hill Street. Hill Street comes into Alabama Street where there's a little jog. I'm sure you're all aware of that. And at the time, there were no stop signs here, so there was a lot of problem with seeing vehicles coming if you're coming down Hill Street. You have a stop sign, but you can't really tell what's coming southbound on Alabama Street. So, since then, since that analysis was done, the city put in stop signs for Alabama. That created a four-way stop situation and mitigated that problem. Went into the traffic, or the traffic accident records that the state provided, and these were based on 2002 to 2010 crash records. There were 15 total reported accidents at the intersection of 180 and Alabama. Four of those accidents involve people coming northbound on Alabama, entering the intersection on the south side of 180, and four of the accidents involved southbound vehicles coming down Alabama, to the intersection that we just looked at. And the other seven were accidents of people just going east and west on 180. Most of the accidents were due to driver's error. Most of the accidents were due to driver's error or inattention rather than road conditions. We couldn't say it was the fault of that sight distance, or it was the fault of no stop sign. It was primarily, um, driver's error, inattention, or deer. Several of the accidents were, um, crashes due to deer. There was one fatal accident involved in, during that time period, and it was a northbound vehicle coming into the intersection from Alabama, and a eastbound vehicle coming down the hill on Highway 180, and two young people were killed. Um, there are several other accidents where there were injuries, but that was the only fatal, those were the only fatalities in that one accident. While we've been talking with people about some of these issues within the area, other concerns percolated out of the, the neighborhood. One neighbor was concerned about the fast traffic on Hill Street. People coming around the corner on, from Mississippi Street on the Hill Street, leaving the university is what they suppose, and rushing down to Alabama, or rushing around the Kentucky Street to get back out onto 180. And the, the folks who told me about this were concerned about the walkers along that street because there is only, um, there weren't consistent sidewalks there, and there was a lot of speed on that street because there, there's not much to slow the traffic down. Um, their, their concern about the church was that traffic will increase on Hill Street with the extension of Mississippi Street. That's just going to create more traffic along their street, which they, they would like to keep as a quiet little street and sober. Um, and then other concerns were obstructions in sidewalks. Obstructions in sidewalks primarily are power poles along, um, the Alabama Street sidewalks. And here, the, you see power poles just dotting the sidewalk, forcing any pedestrians to go around the, the power pole between the wall and the street, and also creating a situation where, where they would not be, um, able to accommodate a wheelchair or a There have been some mitigations in Alabama Street neighborhood to the traffic over the years as well. It's, it's not all bad news. Um, we've had speed tables on that, put on Alabama Street. There's one, um, another one up it towards the northern part, and these have helped slow the traffic down. Um, right now, there is a bridge to be constructed between Little Walnut and Virginia Street, and a walking path that's part of the Safe Routes to Schools program, which will create an easier way for children and adults and all to be able to get across Silver, Silver Creek and over to either Jose Barrios, or down Little Walnut, or up Little Walnut. It's, it will make it a little bit safer and easier for walkers or bicyclists who want to go this way rather than having to go out onto 180 to get out of the neighborhood. That's a project that we hope is going, the, the bridge will be completed by the end of the next six months, Jim?
Jim, just to be clear, that's a pedestrian and bicycle?
Pedestrian and bicycle bridge, right. It's not a, a vehicle bridge. Um, another mitigating thing, we, I was, uh, in the analysis, or the, looking at all the data, found that, um, the speed zones have changed in different parts of that area. Back in 96, the, the, um, Highway 180 was 45 coming into town by, by Alabama Street. Now it's down to 35. It was 30 along Alabama Street, now it's down to 25 with a 15 mile an hour posted speed limit for school times. And there's been a, a crosswalk put in right into, to Montessori School. These have helped make things a little gets, a little bit safer for pedestrians and motorists. George mentioned some complicating factors. Um, US-180 is the responsibility of the New Mexico Department of Transportation. We've had several discussions with them, they have, we've talked with them and done a, a site tour of the line of sight issue at the intersection, and they were going to send their surveyors out to survey it, to make sure that everybody knows exactly whose property is whose at that intersection, so that if things need to be cut back, if anything needs to be moved, we'll know whose property is whose, and they, they're going to work on that with us. Cottage Sand Road is the responsibility of Grant County. Um, they're, they have just recently received some highway funds to change some of the speed limits and make it a little bit safer up Cottage Sand, but it's, they're limited in what they can do because of the right-of-way issues. They don't have a lot of property along that roadway, and so they can't widen it. It's, it's one that they're just gonna have to take some, some different kinds of signage and, um, cautionary provisions to try and make it safer for those people that do travel out Cottage Sands. Power poles are the responsibility of the Power Company of New Mexico. Um, they have a franchise with the community, and historically, they've put their poles where they needed to put them. Um, and the, though the, the town has subdivision authority in the three miles out from the town limits, it's called the extraterritorial jurisdiction, beyond that, we have no authority on the subdivisions. So there, um, that's, that's, that's a complicating factor as, as we see the possibility of more growth out Cottage Sands. So, if you have no questions for me, what are your concerns? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I was wondering if you compared that traffic data with some of the other adjacent intersections such as Georgetown or Virginia, to see the number of fatal accidents, and accidents in general between, because that might be an interesting figure to look at.
We, we didn't have that information, but are you aware of accidents right at Georgia and Virginia coming out on the 180?
That's why I think there's more on Alabama than there are on Georgia.
Right. And that's where most of it-
Are you surprised by the size and other things that you're speaking about?
Right.
So, I just feel that that would be an interesting thing for you guys to actually have to complete.
Thank you. Good idea. Nancy?
Hey Jim, um, I'm sort of curious about why you would stop. Let's see, I'd like to send us some ground rules and sketches.
Sure.
If you don't mind. Well, either way, for the people at home, and so we can report these and pass them on to the town council, if speakers would come up and speak into the microphone so that people can hear you, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much for your cooperation.
We might, I, I think we could also circulate some of these microphones in the audience, could we not? Unplug them? I don't know, can we do that?
No, no, that goes on cable, though.
Well, not unless you're-
Yeah, I'm not sure. The people in the little room in the back would have to tell us.
Okay.
The only way they're going to be able to, um, on the CATS TV, is to stand as a volunteer.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, I'm Nancy Cliff. I live, um, south of 180. And I'm curious about why you stopped the area of concern, uh, to not include at least part of Alabama south of 180. Maybe the hill to Florence, because that is also a historic danger zone and has terrible sightlines to the west. So that if you would just go up that hill, which is also impassable if there's ever any snow or ice, and it's very hard to stop when there's snow and ice. So I would just suggest that you extend the, um, area of interest, especially considering the fact that the fatal accident that happened came off of that intersection. Um, and, you know, it's just an impossible sort of situation for bikers and, and walkers. Crossing that is a nightmare, so that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Um, Nancy, I can kind of give you an idea of why we, we stuck with this. One is because that was the area of interest that the commission has had to deal with recently, but also there's no data for across the highway other than that traffic accident. Um, that intersection, we have numbers on, and we have some numbers above that. We don't have numbers in the other part of that neighborhood.
Well, the, you know, the college produces a lot of traffic at that intersection, and it all, it all comes up and then south on Alabama, so that I think that should be included. Um, if you're looking at that intersection, that side is pivotal, it seems to me.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Nava Konigsberg, and I live in that neighborhood. And, um, first of all, I want to thank you guys for bringing this up. I was part of a group of residents that met with Chief Reynolds and, uh, our city councilman, and, and I want to thank, I never got to thank whoever it was that finally got the speed humps and the stop sign in, but I feel like those have really made a difference. And I really appreciate you taking things to the next level. Um, I'm here representing several families with children who couldn't be here because they were home cooking dinner, and hopefully one of them's feeding my children. Um, so my areas of concern are twofold. One has to do with the, um, obstacles in the sidewalks, and the sidewalks in general. And while I understand that those are the responsibility of the power company, I can't understand why the city can't exert some regulations. I mean, you can tell people how, what they can do with the sidewalks in front of their houses, or where they can build a wall. Certainly, we can tell the power company that they need to figure out a solution to this. Uh, my, when I was young and I would, when my children were young, and I would have to have one kid in one hand and a stroller, and be walking down the street to take my kid to wa, to school, and go into the street with my, you know, a three-year-old and a baby, it, it's terrifying. Um, so that seems, and having sidewalks, there's a lot of places where there aren't even sidewalks. So that seems like a really, really high priority. Um, the other thing has to do, you know, it was interesting when you were talking about the accidents that happened, that they had to do with driver inattention. And I really do think that part of this is psychological, and the problem is the same both coming in from Cottage Sand and coming down 180. And the problem is that there you are on a country road, in the middle of nowhere, going as fast as you want to, and all of a sudden, you're in town. And there's no, there's not enough saying, hey, wait, stop, you're in town now. And so while I recognize that we're not here to talk about solutions, and I recognize that Highway 180 itself is the, is the responsibility of the state, I also see that the state had no problem putting traffic lights all up and down 180 out by the strip so that people could turn into the grocery stores, and yet can't manage to decide to make it a priority to put some, I'm not saying what they should do, just maybe something really bright, you know? Um, I, someone who was here who had to leave was concerned that, asked me to say that they were concerned that there wasn't a city, a county person here, that we need to, there's no way we can talk about this issue without talking about the county road of Cottage Sand, because I, and I live right at that end, that's the end of, of the street that I, of the corridor that I live on. And my experience is, in the morning, people are late for work, and they're rushing in from Cottage Sand, and they're rushing to get to, to 180. And so that's where a lot of speeding is coming from. And then in the afternoons, it's the opposite, people are going home. And I do think that the stop sign and the speed humps, which are, I think they're great, you just kind of glide over them as promised. Um, so those are, those are my concerns, and, um, thank you again very much for, for allowing us to talk about this.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Russell, do you know when the franchise for PNM is up for reconsideration?
Yeah, the franchise is up for reconsideration, I guess. They're pushing, um, how, um, polls would be permitted. Uh, and, um, you know, that this is the time to talk to your counselor, I guess, on that issue.
So it's very timely to involve them. That's great, because this is likely, how often is that franchise negotiated?
You know, I'm not sure. Um, I think there've been different time periods, like five years or 10 years.
Yeah.
So it's not a common occurrence, but I'm not sure that it's a set period in each of the intervals that are negotiated.
So given our concern about this issue, it's very timely to raise the issue with PNM. So that's something we will highlight to the council.
Um, historically, have PNM responded to the town's urging of moving poles for any other reasons?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that. This is an issue that's generally dealt with by the public boards department. I know that, um, and in, in the franchise agreement, there's been a first reading of the ordinance, or the, the franchise agreement's adopted by ordinance, there's been a first reading. So, the second reading, which I believe will be not this next council meeting, but the one after, but I'm not sure about that, and I can confirm that, um, will formalize the franchise agreement. So it is very timely, and now's the time to talk about it. In terms of, uh, Commissioner Paul's question, um, I, I don't know the answer to, you know, whether the, the power company has moved poles in the past, is, is resolved or requested.
Seems to me that I recall a case that we had, that involved a, a pole that was impeding a placement of, uh, a manufactured home on a lot, or something like that. And that there seemed to be a, a feeling at that time that the power company was not at all responsive to concerns that people might have about where they placed their poles, that they were rather insensitive to the needs of homeowners or any other interests.
Just a quick one, one question.
Sure. Could you come to the microphone, please?
My question is that, um, does the town of Silver City have some sort of a resolution to be in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act on all future construction?
I'm sure that, and that's gonna be my next question, actually.
Okay.
What, what is the state of our, trying to make all of our sidewalks and streets compliant with the ADA?
Again, I, I can't really answer that. I know that in the new franchise agreement, looking forward, um, the town will be consulted in the placement of each new pole, but how that might reflect, looking backwards on existing poles, I, I don't know.
Because if the power company's placement of poles is making it impossible for the town to comply, not just on this street, but I would guess perhaps in other areas as well, then that should be a pretty strong argument, I would think, in, uh, leveraging some response from PNM.
Do we know what the right-of-way width is there?
Um, I don't know what the right-of-way width is. Um, commonly, the right-of-ways are 50 feet, but they vary for a lot of historic reasons. I would imagine that on Cottage Sand, for instance, there is no established right-of-way, strictly this prescriptive, you know, custom of, as they've used in the past.
The picture Jim showed, uh, of the telephone poles, there was a wall, and then the telephone pole, and then a little bit of sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I wondered where the right-of-way was in relation to that wall.
My guess is the wall is the edge, but I don't know that.
Please come to the mic.
Hi, um, my name's Amber Rebottom. I have an additional question. Um, would the church be willing to temporarily lean some of the property to enable left turn lane and expand the street right there in that section in front of the church and in front of the school? And that would possibly be something for them to consider, because what it would do is it would force people to turn a little bit, and that would slow them down in that area. And so that would be something that I think could be addressed to the church if they'd be willing to just temporarily lease to the city an extension right there, so then they could have their left turn lane, and it would slow people down, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, you know, I, we talked about this a lot on this commission, as Commissioner Lundey pointed out earlier. And I delivered some flyers to folks on Alabama Street about this hearing tonight, and I'd walked that neighborhood a lot because I used to live over there, but it was- And I'd walked that neighborhood a lot because I used to live over there, but it was a great refresher on what some of the problems are with Alabama Street. And, you know, we keep saying we're not going to talk about solutions. I mean, off the top of my head, I could come up with a bunch of things that I would suggest. But what, personally speaking, what I really want to see come out of this is I would really like the town to commit to spending some money to bring someone in who does this. And I'm not talking about bringing someone in who thinks like the people that thought it'd be a great idea to put six traffic signals in a row along 180 East. I'm talking about someone who has done this in other places that might come up with a sensitive solution that would make a better neighborhood at the same time that it would slow traffic down. And I'm talking about sidewalks and maybe potentially some landscaping. And the thing that worries me about these solutions like, oh, we should put in a left turn lane, is very often those are looked at in the context of traffic flow and helping traffic flow more easily. And I think on Alabama Street, having traffic flow more easily is the exact opposite of what we want to happen. And so...
I don't know if I should suggest that because in the town that I grew up in, that's, there was an area that was a similar corridor that was really fast and what they did was they made it to where there was two lanes, then you'd go to one lane and then you'd be back to two lanes. And so that switch actually forced people to pay more attention because there were more, right, and they needed, there were a little, few little fender benders and things like that, but what it did was it brought it to their attention. And so that would fall upon the comment that she was making that bringing attention to people that it is a different area, maybe some signage possibly coming down 180 would be better.
Right. And what I keep thinking of when I think about this, and, you know, I went to school in Tucson and there's a street in central Tucson called Elm Street. And it runs through a residential neighborhood and it turns into Pima further to the east, which is a major street. But where it turns into Elm Street, it turns into a really residential street, but it has the Arizona Inn, which is a big resort hotel on it in the middle of this neighborhood. And so the way the city of Tucson addressed this is they have a series of basically triangular medians that sort of are on the side of the street, but the, and they're offset from one another. So the effect of that is it basically makes the street curve. And each one of those triangles is landscaped with trees and things so that you can't see all the way down there to see what's coming around those curves. So it narrows the street and makes it less predictable so that you have to drive slower because you can't tell what's going to happen.
And the only reason why I suggested the church possibly would be willing to do this is because they do actually have, their buildings are very set far away from the street and that would be probably easier than having to try to ask people to like give up their front yards or something like that on the other side. So, and since it is in negotiations, right, for being sold, then that would also be something that potentially a new buyer could be put involved with.
I'm not sure what you mean by your last statement. The land has already been purchased, it's not in...
It's not in negotiation?
No, it's not in negotiation.
Right, and the properties that front the tree, the street are not the churches?
They just have an easement that goes out to Alabama. So it's just the road is the only thing that they have as part of their property.
Okay.
It's a shared easement with the Montessori school. So, you know, I think we really need to stay away from solutions, but I can say that in our discussions with the church, they are very willing to work with the neighbors and really want to be good neighbors and a good addition to the neighborhood.
Well, that's definitely a positive direction for things to go, so that settles some...
They are willing to go a long way to help remediate these problems.
Okay, oh yes, and the sidewalks are also a major concern on Alabama and on the neighboring Virginia and Georgia, the irregularity of them, but I think a lot of that comes when you live in an older town and it's a major investment to try to fix that, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a correction. Typically, the streets are 50-foot from edge to edge of the right-of-way. In this area, they're 40 feet. It's an older part of town and so 50-foot wasn't necessarily a standard in the 20s earlier. So in this area, it's 40 feet according to the traffic impact analysis performed for the church.
Just a point of clarification on the last comment. The church, there's two churches involved. There's a church that's trying to sell and a church that already bought. And the, most of the right-of-way on the west side of the street is owned by St. Mary's and that is currently for sale. I don't know if there's any potential buyers or not. The Newman Center does just own a 50-foot easement out to the road on the southern edge of St. Mary's property, so just a clarification point.
Yes, please come forward.
I don't need a microphone, ma'am, thank you, I'm ready.
But our audience at home can't hear you unless you do.
Our biggest problem is having people park on Alabama, whether they're having a party or just saying hello in the morning. That is one big one. Number two, our sidewalks are horrible. I was told that if they go ahead and fix that part of my sidewalk, I would have to pay about $1,000. I'm sorry, I don't have $1,000. Number three is the way I have to go down, I go downhill and across Virginia because I'm not going to get hit on Alabama. I stop at the stop sign, I've gotten rear-ended twice. And of course, they're not going to have that up there because I don't say anything about it, I just chew out the guy behind me. Okay? Now, I also saw where they were going to have a bridge or crossing. Now, is that going to be on state or is that going to be on hill? Another thing is on hill, you don't have any sidewalks, you have a lot of kids going down there to Jose Barrios. We walk down the middle of the road so everybody can see us. Now, comes snow, water, whatever. Drainage, also, coming off of Alabama, hill is the drainage part, are you going to be able to put sidewalks on there for the drainage? And deer, we're having a great big old time over there with the deer. Many people have hit, again, PNM's property, trying to avoid them or they're tearing up somebody's garden or whatever. And I know we're not allowed to shoot them, but, yeah, but those are the things that I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I haven't, I think it was before my time of living here, but didn't they at one point consider some kind of a corridor between Little Walnut and Cottage San as a relief? Or am I, is that just something I heard?
In the United States, there was a transportation study that recommended a linkage, but no specific plan was ever generated before that.
So it's just a recommendation from a traffic study?
That somehow the corridor should be found, right?
Jim, we maybe could add, to answer her question about the pedestrian bicycle bridge, that was on state, correct?
It's between state.
Between state...
Actually, between state and hill.
Between state and...
It's right along the northern edge of Jose Barrios and that's where it'll come across the creek and then come through the botanical garden, right about the middle of the botanical gardens.
So the children will not be able to have any sidewalks at that particular time and just be walking in the middle of the road like always?
If there's no sidewalk there...
There's none?
It's not gonna, that bridge is not going to affect having new sidewalks. In a pedestrian bicycle route plan that's going to be proposed, that sidewalks be provided for that route.
Okay, another one is, do I really have to pay $1,000 to get my sidewalk fixed?
Well, I would say talk to your town counselor. That would be what I would advise you to do. Speaking as a former town counselor, talk to your town counselor.
Typically, the way that works in terms of the sidewalks is the town has lots of sidewalks that need to be constructed or repaired. And so the town tries, and I work with the community development department, we're not directly involved in the construction of sidewalks, so I'm just trying to give a general sort of idea of how that works. And so it has kind of a series of projects in mind that gets put on the capital improvement plan and then those move forward. People that approach the public works department and say, well, I understand that, you know, you have your schedule of how things are going to work, but I would really like to see a sidewalk in my, in front of my house. In situations like that, then they offer the cost share. And so I don't know that there's a fixed sum. It's mostly that if the city is asked to deal with an issue that's not already on a capital improvement plan or the plan of work for the public works department, the city's open to working with the owners of property in town, but it's usually on a, we'll share the cost with you basis.
But if it's on their list, then they will pay for it?
Yes.
So you wait for it to be on the list?
Yes, but there's lots of parts of town that doesn't have it. So one of the things that Jim Coates is working on is identifying a series of sidewalks that would provide, or a series of corridors that would provide sidewalks to all of the various neighborhoods of town. It wouldn't provide a sidewalk for every street, but it would ensure that there would be sidewalks that would connect the different neighborhoods together so that maybe, you know, you would walk down, you know, the street and reach Swan and then there would be a sidewalk all the way down Swan. Or maybe on Silver Street, south of the highway, there would be a sidewalk that would reach all the way through to provide a corridor for people living in Brewer Hill. He's working on that now and that will be incorporated into a plan that the town will adopt in terms of how they set their priorities and how they set their sequences for the work that they're going to do. But for individuals who are concerned about their specific property, the town does offer to help them out.
Is there, is there a site, do they have an internet site where somebody in the community can go and look and see which ones they do have in mind that we're working on so they know?
Not yet, we're still working on the plan.
Thanks Carl, so I live up Hester Drive. And you talked about crossing from Little Walnut across, there was a crossing on Little, on the Hill Waterworks Crossing there for a number of years and then the city saw fit to close it off. So I don't know why they did that, but you could cross there for a length of time. But back on Alabama Street, I have a couple of concerns. One of them is the people coming in from Cottage San, like they were mentioning a minute ago, and I know Mr. Leon has pulled a bunch of them out of his yard. And every time I come down Hester Drive, I fear for my life when I pull out there because I don't know if somebody's coming around there at two mile an hour or 100 mile an hour. And the other concern is, I'd never had much problem with people coming and going up St. Mary's. The problem is Alabama Street layout and obviously the only way they're ever going to fix Alabama Street is to widen it, to, you know, take land from St. Mary's and all along and widen it. However, I was after measuring it, the drivable width of that street is 30 feet. If you park a, like a Dually or a pickup there and assuming that you park it right against the wheels, right against the curb, you have four foot to drive a car down. Now, I don't know many people that have a car that's only four foot wide. Now, they would resolve a lot of their problems on that street because every time I come south on Alabama Street, I have this fear because these people coming north think they've just automatically got the right-of-way and if there's a car parked, that is whipped over there in the other lane. But one way you could resolve a lot of those type problems, is just move the yellow line over two feet. That would help a lot. And I don't have a, pardon? Well, and stop all the parking on the west side. Part of it's already posted, but post all of it and then enforce it. You know, we've got a lot of stuff like jaywalking, nobody ever enforces that, they just come and go as they see fit. But stop the parking on the west side, because I've been down there when they had a garage sale and it was like 10 foot between two cars and it was a real traffic jam. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ray Leon and I live on a corner, southeast corner of Hester Drive in Alabama. I hate to admit it, I've been there 54 years. And through the years, I have seen a lot. The west fence, the corner and the north fence on my property have been hit 31 times.
What?
One of them had insurance. Now, the efforts that have been put into that area have helped it. I'm a little more comfortable now because my fences haven't been hit now for a couple of years. So apparently what you're doing is right, that it's helping and, and the only way of thinking, and maybe too practical, to put a traffic light on that intersection of Hester and Alabama Street. That would certainly control the speeding coming in and going out.
That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Mr. Leon, I think you would be a wonderful resource for any committee that eventually gets convened. One of our hopes is that they are going to convene the county, the state, PNM, the town, the citizens, the walking and bicycle path people, and bring them all together when they start looking at solutions. But, and I think you would be a wonderful addition with your perspective of 54 years in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Every good commission that's ever been successful has a historian.
Hello, I'm Dave Tacey and I live at the Hill and Alabama intersection.
Oh boy.
Yes, very familiar with that there. And so I have an observation and a comment. The observation is, is that the changes they made has brought some rational traffic patterns there and thank you. It's greatly slowing down the traffic. It's, the flip side is that it's a little noisier, but I'll take slow. So thank you for that. My observation is, I would like to see the neighborhood become more residential, if that, to paraphrase what Commissioner Cybo was saying. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jamie Thompson. My interest in this is myself and Andrew Teagarden are working on safe routes to school, Jose Barrios and St. Elementary. If we're going to talk about problems, I think it makes sense to really focus, and you guys have said this a number of times, the problem is traffic volume and traffic aggression. What I mean by aggression is even folks accelerating and slowing down too much. And another one of the problems, I was involved with putting in the speed humps and stop signs. The process for doing that was, we present a problem to the chief of police, he would do the traffic analysis. And then he came up with the prescription. When he came up with the prescription, we had identified the problem of having stop signs, that oftentimes what happens is, it may decrease the average speed by the types of accelerations you get when people stop and then they accelerate, especially if the stop signs are too far. And you also get the same thing with the speed humps, especially, or speed tables. And we brought these things to his attention. The problem is, is there are other prescriptions that probably would have slowed down traffic without the resulting, resultant problems, such as off camber humps, or we don't want to go into... Well, we don't want to go into the solutions, but we did present the problems and we were available for that. So I think having a police chief that has a million things to do, they may not, he may not be the best place for developing best practices. I agree with Nick that having a lot of what we intuitively think is the problem and the solution may not be the best idea. Sometimes when you, for example, and let me go back. What Nick said is having someone come from the outside and do a planner that creates realistic solutions. That's a great idea. Unfortunately, one of the other problems is that we often develop plans, but we never implement them. One of the plans that I keep talking about that was not considered in this is the Silver Creek pedestrian corridor. And that was developed originally, I believe, in 1969, the comprehensive plan. It's also, I think, described in the Trails and Open Spaces Plan, which was adopted fully by the comprehensive plan in 2004. And I think it's in full agreement with the Flood Plan Management, or the Flood Plane Management Plan. So there are these plans, and we haven't really aggressively, and you know, part of this is, you know, was my fault in the last two years, I didn't aggressively pursue Silver Creek as much as I should have. But the focus of traffic volume, alleviating some of that volume through a corridor of, an off-street corridor for bicycles and walkers, may help things a little bit. The other thing that I was a little surprised on is that the scope of this didn't really include the ETZ. And it seems that if traffic volume is the main concern, and 73% of the traffic is associated with that area and beyond, that it really makes sense to at least be talking about Yeah, so as far as the Safe Routes to Schools goes, we have found that we really want to use that pedestrian bridge and crossing, and this goes with what Nancy Cliff was talking about. Getting bicycles onto Little Walnut is difficult. It would be much easier for us, and Little Walnut's a little dicey in 180. So getting kids from town to the pedestrian bridge so we can access Little Walnut is pretty critical. And again, the thing that is the biggest problem that we see with riding with kids all the time, traffic aggression, accelerations, and volume. And so we just really got to concentrate on that. And the reason it's important is because these roads represent public space, and our children have a right to that public space. And when a child gets hit, if our traffic cannot accommodate a 10 to 12-year-old child, then that is unacceptable. And we need to always focus on that, I really think, because it says a lot about our community. And I, lastly, I really applaud this commission. The orientation, this proactive orientation toward problems, I think is spectacular. Informing the council and staff about what is critical. I think this is really spectacular that you're doing it. To have a community forum is wonderful, and just your orientation, being down here with the audience, I really appreciate the thought that went into that.
Thank you very much.
Could you help me better understand what you mean by traffic aggression? What I thought I heard you say was because of stop signs, speed humps, things like that, you have people slowing down, they want to make up lost time so they accelerate faster, and that's, you're interpreting this acceleration to make up for lost time because of stop signs and speeds was your definition of traffic aggression? Was that correct?
Yes, yes. I mean, you see it like at the high school parking lot, the feeling of aggression. You may have the same average speed in an area where you have traffic coming, right? Where people are, there's a lot going on, a lot of curves, where people feel, all the signals say, "I should be going 15 to 20 miles an hour." I'm in a residential area. When the signals say, "I should be going 40 miles an hour," in other words, the road is engineered for 40 miles an hour, my car is telling me I should be going 40 miles an hour, and the only thing that is signaling to me that I should go 20 miles an hour is a speed limit sign and someone who is impeding my way to get to wherever I want to go, then I'm going to react with aggression. And it's really bad for everybody. It's the source of road rage. It's a bad thing.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you said about children and placing a value on children in this community. I really do appreciate that. Okay, do we have more comments? Please.
Has the city and the county ever made an agreement about the ETZ zone? Did they ever reach an agreement? I know they've followed it for an agreement. Okay, the county and the city for a number of years tried to get an agreement on the ETZ zone, or ETJ you call it now, and they never could any time I was involved with them.
Well, you mean an agreement?
But how to control, what laws you have in the ETJ zone?
No. The town, by state statute, has the authority to approve subdivisions that are small, that involve lots that are smaller than five acres. The county also approves that, so there's a kind of a dual submittal.
They had a meeting between, made up of the city and the county, to come up with a mutual agreement. So did they ever do that?
The agreement's been signed, the county has never convened the group.
Okay, thank you.
Is the county the only one who can convene the group?
Yes. What he's speaking of is that right now there's this dual jurisdiction issue that's tied to block size. There was a commission or committee that was organized to find a single review process for subdivisions in the county. There were some draft standards proposed. There was a JPA that was agreed to by the city and the county that was adopted. There were members of the town that were appointed to a commission, there were members of the county appointed to the commission, but it was never convened.
Are they still lacking members? I thought I heard recently.
I think all the terms have expired. I mean, I think they were appointed for two years.
Because I thought I heard recently advertisements for it.
They're advertising for planning and zoning commissioners, but I don't think they're currently advertising for that commission. That would be sort of a joint commission if it were.
Yeah, I have to put in a pitch for the planning and zoning commission. The fact that you showed up to talk about an issue in your neighborhood shows you have potential to be a great planning and zoning commissioner. So we're going to have some vacancies on the board coming up very soon. Both Commissioner Longley and myself are resigning, and I hope you will put in an application for yourself.
I will not run if nominated. I will not. Here's a problem, and I think it's, oh, I'm sorry. My name's Andrew Teagarden. I live on Georgia Street on the other side, the south side of 180. Here's a problem that is a really good one. We are encouraging children and the general public to walk and bike more, and that's good for lots of different ways. I work with Jamie with Safe Routes to School. It's a grant, it's Department of Transportation, New Mexico Department of Transportation, just to fill everyone in. It's a one-year grant, and part of our grant is encouragement and safety. There are schools there. Montessori is definitely into encouraging pedestrian traffic. We got the bridge, and then Jamie and I are at that school encouraging pedestrian safety and getting more people out doing it. So we have to think about kids and walkers and bikers with this. The other problem, and I hate to be fatalistic, but we might be screwed here. I mean, that's a narrow road, there's private owners, it comes right up to it. I have this feeling that it's, you know, it's almost like we need to, we need to not forget about this example in other situations with planning. So, but, you know, we have to be sensitive. We have to come up with a sensitive solution and work hard on this one. So, yeah, and Jamie and I are a source as far as children and walking and biking if any of the commissioners have any questions, so feel free to call us sometime.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll do that. Please.
I would like to describe my neighborhood, my experience of living in my neighborhood. I live in a neighborhood where my children walk to school or ride their bikes. I live in a neighborhood that's bounded on two sides by schools, the Montessori School and Jose Barrios. My son, because of the way the streets are, has to go on Alabama to get to Jose Barrios, even though we're on the Jose Barrios side of Alabama. I live in a neighborhood where I, all the other people with kids, the kids are always back and forth, we're always sharing children, where kids are going back and forth. You know, my daughter's at his house to babysit for his kid, or somebody's over at my house. I live in a neighborhood where I'm over picking Mr. Leon's cherries off of his cherry tree.
Does he know that?
I live in this amazing neighborhood with, that has a sense that is so lacking in America today, you know, where people don't know their neighbors, and where, I live in a real neighborhood. And the thing that is, that I rail against is that my neighborhood becomes relegated to being just a place that people who live further out have to get through as fast as they can to get somewhere else. And of all the things we talk about, and I think, Nick, thank you so much for saying what you said about, you know, we don't want to just make it easier. We say we are a neighborhood, we are a wonderful neighborhood, and we want to stay that way, and we want to maintain our integrity, and the solution has to be, has to include that. And so I just really want to say how much I appreciate living in this neighborhood and how grateful I am, and I see there's people here that I don't know who live in my community. But anyway, I just really needed to say that.
Thank you.
Following up on that, just one more little thing. It would be nice, too, if we maybe had just a little bit more notice about this meeting. I'm not sure exactly how it was advertised. I found out because I was given a flyer yesterday afternoon, and so a little teeny bit more notice.
We actually started advertising a month ago.
Okay, okay, yeah, I just.
So we did our best.
Okay, yeah, I just, it didn't, I guess I missed it somehow.
Maybe we should send a email.
Oh, really? Yeah, I didn't get a letter. Okay, all right, thank you. That's all.
Hi, my name is Kristen Aragoni. I live on the corner of Alabama and Hester, and I would just like to reiterate a couple of things. One being, if there was a study done in 1996 that assessed that Alabama was going to get too much traffic and they needed to find a way to bring people from Little Walnut to Cottage Sands another way, I, as someone who, my dog was hit and killed by a driver going too fast on Alabama, my gas line was also hit, causing gas, natural gas to be shooting back at my house, and my family and I had to be evacuated. We went without gas for several weeks because of that. I live on the curve, on the very last house before the city line. So I'm in this zone where I'm not really in anybody's jurisdiction, so I very rarely see either the sheriff stopping on, who, the sheriffs go extremely fast past my house, getting to something much further down Cottage Sands, or the police are stopping people up by the Montessori School. So there's this zone where Nava and I live that, and poor Mr. Coates, I mean, I have to say, this fence has been, you know, just mauled. I was watching the last time this fence got hit, and it was horrible, and all I could think was that could have been one of my kids, you know? I had to put up a big fence because things were getting stolen out of my yard all the time, and it's been quite an interesting introduction into the neighborhood over four years. So what I would suggest is that if widening the road, which seems to be this thing people talk a lot about, which seems nearly impossible on Alabama Street, if that is what I suspect it is, is truly impossible, and we know that there are many, many homes past where I live on Cottage Sands that need to be accessed by many other parts of town, what I would suggest is that rather than beating this dead horse of trying to widen Alabama Street, and again, I know we're not talking about solutions, but I think that's what you end up having to do. So what I would suggest is that looking at a way to use one of those already existing dirt roads that goes from Little Walnut and make it go to Cottage Sands and go past my neighborhood, and what Nava's saying is true, we're the neighborhood that people zip through, and Robbie's got little kids, and I have little kids, and Nava's got kids, and there are all kinds of older folks in this neighborhood who need sidewalks to walk on. I mean, I, my husband and I pulled our car over to help a woman with a walker who couldn't get around the pole. We pulled over to get her off the side to make it so she could just get around these poles. And I've done it with a stroller to the point where my sons and I have almost been hit. And we play this game, run around the pole on Alabama Street, and, you know, how is that helpful for trying, and I'm at the very end, so, and I don't drive. So this is coming from someone who has the directional ability to literally, I can go in a circle and get lost. I have to walk, and I can't get even from my house to Robbie's house, or, I mean, to go to Nava's house, which is like 50 yards from my house, I have to go through several perilous corners with my kids. So, I mean, if part of the solution, I guess, and my husband and I have talked a lot about this, could be the potential of looking at another road, I think that that should be addressed, because we all want our traffic to be neighborhood traffic. We want the traffic that's going to Branding Iron to be allowed to go there, and we would like for the traffic that's going to up Cottage Sands to have another access, because for us, in Branding Iron, which is right there, that's very few people. You know, the Branding Iron has seven houses that were built in the last few years. That's not the issue. The issue is much further down Cottage Sands, where all those people are going. All those big trucks that are driving past my house in the middle of the night, they aren't turning on Branding Iron. They keep going down Cottage Sands. So for me, it's an issue of this small neighborhood that gets dismissed with people going very quickly out Cottage Sands Road. And so I would hope that we can address that with both what Andrew's talking about, with better pedestrian access, which is huge in that neighborhood. I don't have a sidewalk at all, and before I had a fence, my yard was sort of like the Alabama Street byway. Everyone just walks through my yard. I would say that collectively you can come up with a solution that maybe just takes a little pressure off of us who are right on Alabama Street, rather than, because the last thing we need is more construction. The last thing that anybody on Alabama Street wants is to say, "Okay, well, guess what we're going to do now is we're going to spend the next two years widening Alabama Street." We've been through more construction on that street, I mean, than one can imagine. So please take all that into consideration. Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
What I'm kind of hearing, obviously we have multiple problems, which require multiple solutions, but would you agree, and maybe the general populace here agree, that the first things we need to look at is the two ends, getting people to come in slower?
Absolutely.
So concentrate on those rather than the in-between portion.
And that's really what the issue has been. There's been a lot of concentration on the middle where the Montessori School is, because that's where kids are.
-because that's where kids are, you know, there's a group, there's a lot of globbing of children. But, that's not where the speed starts. The speed starts at Alabama and 180, and the speed starts way out on Cottage Sands when you're on the country road.
Where the city goes.
If we got a stoplight on 180 in Alabama, again, I know this is a solution, but if we had a stoplight there that slowed people down before they turned, and said, "Hey, this is a residential area that you're moving into," that would be a solution from one direction. If, I mean, again, I know nothing about traffic patterns, so that may not be the solution, but some way that people were slowed down turning onto Alabama. And then, obviously, the last thing that I want is a stoplight at my house. But if that's what would stop his house from getting pummeled, and my dog from getting killed, and my gas line from getting hit, and Robbie's kids from not being safe, and her kids from not being able to, then I'm happy to have a stoplight. You know, I'll put up big, heavy blinds in my windows if that's what it takes. But there does have to be some really sort of clear understanding that it's the ends that are causing the issue for everyone that lives in the middle. And, you know, it's terrifying to try and walk, if you're on one of those really, really steep hills, and you're coming down with a stroller, and you realize somebody's going 50, it's terrifying. And, you know, I mean, the last thing anybody in this town wants is for it not to be a dog that's getting run over, but for it to be a kid. And it's not just my dog that's gotten hit. Many, many, many animals get hurt in that neighborhood. You know, it's a really funny area. I've been chased by a 600-pound pig down Alabama Street. This is a true story. We have witnesses in this room that saw this occur, just as much as, you know, it's a very confusing area, because it's that, that place where the rural-
It's the end of the day.
And it is confusing. And so, I, you know, I mean, this is not to say, this is, you know, this is a city and we need to treat it like a city, because that's not what this neighborhood is. It's why my family and I chose it, is because it's not right downtown, because it has that sense of being a little neighborhood. But I would say that really looking at those interfaces, where, you know, a road like 180 is meeting a place like Alabama, there's a serious situation there, and then at our end, where it's just no man's land, becomes very confusing. And so, whatever can be done to address all of that, and then I also think, and this is a completely, again, another solution, but maybe some designation that can be made, like other neighborhoods have gotten designation by the city as an actual neighborhood, I think that that can be really helpful in having some pull, some understanding that if you name a place, then it maybe has more value. So, anyway.
That is a really good idea. That is a really good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Ed Stevens. I live on Mississippi Street. I guess I'm a little confused. When I came to the meeting, I thought that they were going to discuss the ins and outs of the church, and how that they were going to access, and it, I guess, I don't understand if the problem on Alabama is because the traffic is not being controlled, or because there's too much traffic, or because there's not enough infrastructure money to do something to solve the problem, or the projected 96 wasn't going down Little Walnut off of, I don't really, and I don't drive, I don't drive Alabama, so, but I am, after sitting here for a couple hours, I'm confused as to what type of actual people have come in and analyzed this to come up with solutions. I saw your studies there, but really, it shows that there's fewer people using the street than it was, but there seems to be more problems. And it, if the problems are so great, why did they allow a used variance to create additional problems for the church? These are the things that, and I'm not anti on just asking the questions. You have a traffic problem, evidently. The solutions, after listening to numerous people, it seems like part of, and I, again, this, I'm not meaning to talk solutions, but if vehicles are driving 50, 60 miles an hour down the street, it seems like to me, that's traffic control. If they're running into your house 35 times in the last number of years, that seems to be traffic patrol. But at the same time, if the traffic is decreasing from the year 2000, or 1995, it doesn't, it's not logical to see where there's that more problems now. So, I hate to walk away confused, but I am confused about what, you know, if there's not infrastructure money to solve the problem, take part of the traffic down Little Walnut, or move it around to another area by which to eliminate the problem, then it seems only logical that you have to control the problem with cameras, with something, and make fines if they're driving 55 miles an hour, make the fines where you only do it once. And again, that's maybe solutions, but I didn't come here for this. I came to find out about what was the projected down Mississippi Street, or the problems that might occur, to talk about that. So, I'm glad you bared with me for this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else?
The man who started it all.
Yes. By the way, while he's going to the microphone, I hope you all signed in, because numbers count, and just being able to turn over to the town council evidence that we had this many people coming out to talk about this topic for two and a half, or three hours, really makes a difference. So, please, sign the sign-in sheet before you leave if you didn't do it coming in.
Hey, my name's Robert Eagle. I live at 1806 Alabama. And I guess from what I've gleaned from some of the stuff, that unfortunately, I had to leave for a few minutes, had to take care of some personal stuff. So, I missed, I think, a good body of the discussion, which I apologize, I wish I would have been here for. And I just had, one of the observations I was able to make from coming back, and I just caught, I agree with Ed, that there's some control, I mean, I know a lot of people here, and some people I don't know, unfortunately. I see all of them. I don't know about the study that said that there was a higher, higher volume of traffic in 95 compared to now. I wasn't living here at that time, but I would find that hard to believe on a personal level. There's definitely times of the day when it's not, the traffic is less, and it's increased other times of the day. My wife personally witnessed about a week and a half ago, two vehicles being passed by a big truck, that they were going the speed limit, and the truck couldn't wait, and he zoomed around, and she was walking, so she couldn't get, she couldn't see, she wanted to get the guy's license plate. As you know from the meeting we had a few months ago, I brought up some issues where I had actually driven after people, called the police, waited, no, you know, there's got to be a little more response. I mean, and I think that, as we talked about a few months ago, there's no easy solution to this. Obviously, I built a wall to try to help with some of the noise, but the speeding thing is an issue, and Jamie did bring up a really good point about children. We're all concerned about our children, and even our personal safety. And I, I don't really know what this, I can't even begin to say what a solution would be in this situation, but it seems like an immediate thing to address is the fact that people are speeding. There's a lot of disrespectful people who don't seem to care about the neighborhood, which it is a neighborhood, and it would be really appreciated by a lot more of us. We have seen some police activity in the neighborhood since they put in a stop sign, but all they're doing is stopping, they're basically just giving people tickets for rolling the stop sign. If you don't come to a complete stop, and they can still see your hubcaps rolling, they give you, it's not really addressing the problem of speeding. And prior, we all know, you know, it was approximately two years ago that that stop sign was put in. Prior to that, people were just driving through, but there was, people were able to park on both sides of the street, and that actually did control the traffic to a degree. People had to slow down, upcoming traffic, there were people parked on both sides of the street, everybody had to slow down a little bit, because it was a little bit dodgy getting through there. So, that actually had a better effect than the speed bumps. So, when they took that, they made it where you couldn't park on the west side of the street, that actually increased the traffic flow as far as speed, and allowed people on the, on the southbound side to go faster. And so, we sometimes park on our side of the street to try to help slow things down. But, it is an issue, and the one thing I miss, and I'm sorry because I was gone, I had to take care of that, but is there anybody here from the county at all?
No.
Well, I live in the county out of the world.
No, no, I mean, a worker, a person who represents the county, because I really see this as something that has to be worked out with the county. And, you know, from looking at this map, I think that the ingress and egress of people going through our neighborhood to access the county out there, and there's a lot of potential growth that could happen out there. I mean, there's hundreds, if not thousands, of acres of land that could be developed out there, and I'm not against that. I know it would increase the tax base, it'd bring more money to the city and the county, probably more to the county, but why is there not somebody here from the county to speak up on, about any of this stuff? I think this is sort of, you know-
What I would be willing to do is to take a report to the next county commissioner's meeting about what took place here, and report some of your concerns. Obviously, they have to be a part of the solution.
I think so.
There's no way that this problem can be dealt with without involving the county, the state, the town, or PNM.
I think, though, that we should also be realistic in that the county is very limited in terms of what it does, and what it's set up to do in terms of planning. And if we're going to talk about solutions with the county in the context of trying to do, you know, a connector road somewhere out there that would connect Cottage Sands to Little Walnut, yeah, that's a conversation that they should be in on. But in terms of, you know, meeting, having the county here to say, "Well, you should stop, or slow down, or redirect potential growth out Cottage Sands and Ellis Mesa," I think we should all be realistic in the sense that that's never going to happen.
I don't think that's what's being discussed.
I disagree.
I don't think, no one's saying it. I think all we're saying is, their awareness of this situation needs to be raised-
Right.
-just as the towns does, so that they make it a higher priority. The county also needs to be fully aware of how concerned, and the kinds of problems that people who live in this neighborhood are living with.
I mean, I think that it is an important thing. I mean, the county should be, I mean, we're in the county, this is a county building also, I mean, they should be concerned about the entire area. It's part of, I mean, that's part of any kind of civil growth of any kind of situation that's going on. We all want things to get better around here, but they should be, I think. I think it's important for them to be somewhat aware of these things, and if they just, if they're not going to get involved or listen to what the people, I mean, we're the ones who live in the neighborhood that everybody's jamming through to get out to, 73%, I think was the number, 77 out of 10 cars are going out to get to county access area. And I mean, I have property out there, too, I understand. I'm not saying I want to limit the growth out there, I just want, I mean, if I saw an officer, a sheriff, or a city, Silver City, police officer, there once or twice a week just clocking people, and I've talked to them, they say, "Well, we can't clock on the road because we have to be in certain positions." It's like, come on, they could be making a net out there. I mean, it's like, it's, at least until people slow down, and then see, but I mean, that's neither here nor there. I just want to say thanks for bringing this. I mean, I didn't realize that my building a wall was going to create such a situation, but in a way, I'm glad it did, but, you know, and I'm mostly concerned about the stuff that's going on behind the Montessori School, because my kid goes to school there, but I don't know how that's all going to play out, and I missed some of those, that other meeting that perhaps happened, but I want to say thank you for you guys, if what I did brought some of this to the attention of other people, I mean, all of us who live there, we all know it, we live it. So, and that's not the first time that we've witnessed trucks or vehicles passing, it's insane. It's like, it's completely insane, and when a dual, or a big truck, diesel truck blows around a car, two cars, because they can't, they can't wait to get to 180, or to get to the end of, to get to Cottage Sands, I mean, what's going on here? There's never an officer there when you need one. So, you know, whatever we could do, and I'm sorry that the speed bumps didn't work, I'm sorry the stop sign hasn't really done much, but, and I'm sorry I missed other suggestions or other things people brought up, but I do appreciate everybody doing this, and I'm glad that we could come together on this. But I hope that there's any more, any more conversations that the county, or someone from the county we can talk to about this.
Thank you.
Because they need to be concerned about this.
I will take it to Mr. Sorry myself.
All right, well, thank you very much. Good evening.
I'd like to clarify a question that came up about some of the information that was presented. Between 1996, when the traffic plan was done, and 2010, which was when the traffic analysis was done for the church, there was a 5% growth in the amount of traffic coming off of the intersection of Alabama and 180. Between 2005 and 2010, that's the period that showed a decrease, but over the time period of 16 years, it actually did show an increase. Sorry about that confusion.
Jim, to clarify, when you're saying, over the entire period that we have studies for, there was a 5% increase?
Right.
And if we had been taking the snapshot back seven years ago, we would have showed a much larger increase, but that decrease has sort of had a lower overall.
And I trust the 96 to 2010 numbers as a comparison a little bit more than the 2005 to 2010, because they were done by the same engineering firm in the same way. There is a difference in how the 2005 information was presented, that there did show a definite increase in traffic between 96 and 2005, and between 96 and 2010, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, you prefaced all of the reporting on the studies by saying, "These are snapshots, they're inexact, they could change if we did it again tomorrow." You know, you take all of that kind of data with a grain of salt, I think. You people lived the experience, and I think you have a very accurate sense of what's happening with the traffic in the area. Okay, anyone else? I thank you very, very much for being part of this discussion. I think you have brought out a lot of very useful information that we wanted, that kind of high-impact, dramatic testimony of what you're experiencing out there, and we certainly got it. We will do our best to make what you shared with us count by taking it to the ears of the people who are in a position to do something about it. And I hope you'll all be a part of the solution when it gets time to generate solutions. And I salute you for having a wonderful neighborhood. I'm ready to move myself. So, thank you again for being here.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do want to point out one thing in terms of state and the county.
This is a town planning commission. The idea was to elicit comments from the neighborhood that then can be carried to the county and can be carried to the state. I don't think that they're, that they are uninterested in these issues, I think they're quite interested in these issues, but the purpose of this meeting specifically was to gather some information from the residents of the area that can be carried forward in order to encourage a partnership between the town and the county, and to encourage a partnership with the state highway as well, and all the other entities. So, I want to make sure that people don't think that the county doesn't care, the state doesn't care. This is just the first step in an effort to create this larger effort that involves all the partners together.
I think that's right, and I think it's important to understand that all governments have lots of competing priorities, and we experience them too. I mean, we all wear different hats and have other irons in the fire in addition to this one, ways that we'd like to see our taxes money spent. And, but we know that to get anything done, you need to get the attention of the decision-makers. You need to make them understand what an important issue it is to you, and the fact that so many of you came out should get their attention, and hopefully, it will work its way up the list of priorities.
Madam Chair, I just want to point out, too, we've talked tonight, and there's been a lot of concerns from the neighborhood, and we've been bringing this up. And I know that when we talk to folks at the county and our town councils, they hear a lot of complaints. You know, everyone has traffic problems in their neighborhood.
You know, everyone has traffic problems in their neighborhood, everyone has problems with speeding. And the reason why I personally am particularly interested about this particular area is because they do deal with so much external traffic. And when you look at similar transition zones around the community, be it Swan Street or Little Walnut Road or Ridge Road, you get those situations where you have the traffic coming in, but there's a slow transition between the rural environment and the environment of the city. And Alabama Street through this sort of quirk of planning and history, there is an instant transition from super rural to super neighborhood. I mean, you've got people whose front yards butt right up on the street instantly from one to the other, and it's, it's a particularly special instance. And so, I mean, that's really the reason I'm interested in seeing this highlighted and something done about it because it's, it's a special priority, I think, for those reasons.
Thank you. Okay, we will, um, do we have minutes to review, Mr. Russell?
Thank you so much. It is so heartening to feel that whatever the council, the county or the state, whether they care or not, it's meant to be.
Thank you, thank you. Nice to be a part of it.
Thank you guys for all coming out. This is the best turnout we've had in a little while for an issue, so that's very good. And I also want to just reiterate what Allison said earlier, uh, we do need commissioners. So if there's anybody in the room who would have any interest, you do not have to have a.
To serve your community.
Planning and zoning degree, you just have to live in the city limits. So, anybody interested, please, 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 the, I guess, the city.
Ann.
Ann, okay.
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
We should now take a few minutes to read the minutes since we didn't have a chance to review them in advance.
I thought we did.
We didn't have packets this time.
But did we sit on the internet?
Oh, I guess if we bothered to read them.
Oh.
And by we, I mean me.
I certainly appreciate your trouble. You wanted to know, explain to us what you're doing, how we're trying to work together. It made a big difference for me. And you were very thorough.
He was very thorough.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Watch out, watch out for them cherry pickers.
Pardon?
Watch out for those cherry pickers.
Yeah.
I think that's the least of his concerns.
What kind of cherry trees work best for you? What, what variety are these?
I, they're the edible, I don't know the name of it. I know one that, uh.
They're the sweet ones?
Cherry tree on my north side.
Mm-hmm.
Had a bumper flower.
Wow.
Every morning, all of the city's citizens come by and help themselves the cherry.
You can't eat.
They fill their pockets when they need to work, you know?
There you go. There you go. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Isn't that bad because you've been telling this one, he's one of them, just meet one of the findings, you don't want to meet the same premises. So the manager, isn't that opening up the inquiry?
Well, I think you're given a choice. It either meets it or it doesn't meet it. If you say it doesn't meet it, then you're rejecting the finding. And I think it's just a, a way of constructing and demonstrating the choice, but, you know.
I was going to add the grammar because the top is, we need to find the following findings.
Uh-huh.
And then each means this and then, because it's or.
Yeah, but if it doesn't, if, if all of them are the negative, then it doesn't meet a finding, but we can change it.
How do you define the grammar of it?
I think the grammar works.
Opening it up so you do this or this, so it does meet it then?
No, if it doesn't, if, if, if it's in the negative, it does not meet it, then that finding is rejected and you work your way down through and if all the findings are rejected, then you have to reject the, the application.
Okay. I was just thinking, if it meets one of these findings and you just have the finding that has to meet.
Right.
And not have that or not, because I just thought, well, that's kind of.
I think you're drawing, drawing it directly from the text.
Instead of saying or, I was thinking it would say like, in other words, it does not. Does that make sense?
Well, I think you're saying that you would prefer just to say that it does meet the finding and not have the parenthetical or does not. It does not is the negative form, but we can change it.
It's a, it's a word or, I think. It's like, it's saying, well, you can do either or instead of, in parentheses, just saying does not. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or, I was wondering about the grammar of it, if it's, if somebody could use that as some kind of a sticking point.
No, no one can use it as a sticking point.
Okay.
But, but if you would prefer this to say, to state all the findings in the positive, affirmative format and then to say, I find, I, I, I base my decision on finding one, then you don't check that issue. I don't see any reason why we could.
I was also thinking, yeah, we just think a lot faster for if they have a case now.
Everybody has a chance to read the minutes.
We have to read the whole thing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes of planning zoning commission meeting of February 7th, 2012.
Okay. Um, in discussion, there is one very minor correction. Uh, on page two, it should be 2003 was the year in which I had prior contact with Mr. Ciano rather than 2004.
I'll amend my motion to read as corrected.
Any other discussion? All those in favor approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Um, do we have any reports from staff? Do we have any reports from the commission?
Is it, is my understanding correct that we're looking at having election for chair in the May meeting?
Yes.
So we'll be scheduling that to happen?
Yes. That is my understanding. So I think we have to announce that at the next meeting and then have the actual election adjourned.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'd just like to let you and the rest of the commission know that next month's meeting, the April meeting, um, I will be out of town attending the National Main Street Conference in Baltimore on our commission meeting.
Congratulations, that should be fun.
Looking forward to it, but I won't be able to be with you all next month.
Okay.
So if that will present a problem.
Then I need a firm pledge from all you four remaining commissioners that they will be here because as we know, Commissioner Curtis is probably not going to be able to join us next month. Okay. So make promise.
Be there or be square.
Yes, okay. Anything else? Eat some crab when you're in Baltimore. Stockshelled if it's available.
We will send him three seasons of The Wire.
Okay. All right, well, we've had some pretty extensive community input tonight. I doubt there's any more. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
I'll second.
You go some papers, please say aye.
Aye.
I mean, yes, adjourns.